Welcome everybody to the monthly meeting of the Rosedale Town Board. Please join in me in reciting Pledge allegiance to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Got your minutes there, take your minutes to review and then we'll take action on them.
Carol, did we get rid of any of our junk?
Yeah.
There's only one table thing out there and two chairs.
There's a bunch of hygiene things out there in the middle of sidewalk.
Ooh, good. There's still a lot of books.
I'll take the books out. I'll take all of them when I leave. I've got a lot of grandkids and I'm going down to Oklahoma and she's turning two, so.
Oh, great.
Perfect.
I'll take all your books off your hands.
The box is really heavy, so that's great. We won't have to.
Nikki's here.
It is heavy, really is.
Picture, right?
I think it was left for Michael once.
Nikki, you're gonna need somebody to help you with that box.
And Evan was supposed to take it to him and then I think mine's been drowning in books, so he didn't take it.
She knows better than that.
We see we got, I mean, we're getting rid of stuff on. Some chairs went in the dumpster. Tony took some yesterday.
Okay.
So I hope they're starting to farm.
That's March. That's not April. April's free. I just got the last make date for April today.
No. I'm trying to hurry through the minutes. What can we do wrong if we had even making the motion in a second and nobody's making the motion in a second because of what it all is?
That is literally what it all is, Becky. So if you guys don't know between the two of you, then I don't know either.
I don't know either. I got that period.
I'll stop. I'll make you a copy of that, Kevin. Put it in. I'll put it in your box.
If you had a chance to review the minutes.
I made commotionally except the minutes from the April 13th.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes from the April meeting. Anything under question? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Post, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, we'll go around the room for public comments. Start over here. I assume you're Emily, right?
I am. I have any comments. I'm here for my first initiation.
Nikki? I don't know who you are.
I'm just here to, uh, saw something else. I'll wait for it to see if I can.
What's it about?
Oh, uh, all my ancestors are buried over here at this cemetery. And, uh, me and my grandpa, or me and my dad always did the, uh, headers for, had the stone set on. And my grandma passed away and we got two more lots over there. And my grandpa was buried over there and grandma, grandpa and all that. And, uh, I went to go pour their, their, their head, their footers. And they said that, uh, that they don't do anymore, that I gotta go in front of the town council to get permission to do that.
Yeah, I thought your voice sounded familiar. So I talked to him on the phone and I, I said that we don't, as long as I've been in office, we don't let people pour their own foundations. So he said that someone in the past had told me they could come for our council meeting. I said, there's council meeting tonight. You're welcome to come. So here you go.
Well, there are certain requirements for depth and size that's bigger, how much bigger it is than the stone. So do you know what the stone looks like?
Uh, I do not, not yet, but, uh.
Well, you know how wide it is? How long it is?
Not, not quite yet.
Then you can't be putting the foundation in until you know.
Okay, so I get the size, you tell your.
But he can pour it himself?
No.
Okay.
We, we'll have to do it, but you gotta, we gotta know how big it is.
Well, I did my grandma's, um, me and my dad did both my grandma's, my great grandma and my grandma over there.
Well, sometimes rules change.
Right. I mean, I got family members that contract and do concrete for a living. They're only a concrete company. I mean, I don't know, things that are around, you know, maybe it's worth by interest.
They do. The stone companies, typically the monument companies install with the foundations. The only ones that we do are the veteran stones that Tony does.
Where are you getting the stone?
Um, I don't know, quite yet.
Well, once you get all that information, then you need to contact us back.
Okay, should this happen next month?
Second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, alright.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Alright, uh-huh.
Jerry? Hey Jerry?
Oh, I just.
How does Jerry?
I can't tell back there. It's too far away.
Actually, um, I didn't have really anything to bring. If they would just, uh, I needed another gallon of, uh, white paint to finish up.
Did you get it?
So.
No, I didn't care.
Okay.
And I think.
I just got the truck back.
I think that if, when that's done, that's pretty much all of it, right? I mean, does the, the yellow on the curbs across from Fuquay's, did them get painted yellow?
I wouldn't paint anything over my Fuquay's building.
Nothing?
No.
Just finish out on the sidewalk there?
Yeah.
Just on the.
Yeah, just on that main. Yeah.
The main block.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah. Oh, and chickens.
What?
You made a decision on chickens?
Yeah.
Chickens?
Chickens.
Jerry would love it if we would reverse our position on chickens in town, but I, I don't see us reversing it anytime soon.
We'd have to redo the ordinance and everything.
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of.
Chickens are nasty.
My neighbor had some years ago. And he was grandfathered whenever that ordinance went in. So, once you got rid of them, it was over with. Mike?
Well, I'm here about the Dollar General and their lights again. You all know, some of you know, I put on Facebook about trash in the Dollar General. Okay, well, store manager didn't like it. Next day, a couple days later, wind blew, blew all their boxes from out back and I was asking to put a container for us back there. And the manager asked to. They won't do it. So I had to pick up, not only people's trash, their trash. I picked it up once at noon. I went inside, came out at three, three, at three o'clock to pick up my granddaughter. There's even more boxes in my yard. So I picked them up. I saved it. I've got one dumpster full of their trash already from their boxes. I take them over to the store, five to ten, to make sure there ain't nobody over there and I dropped them in the door. The store manager mad. She told me, I'm supposed to, uh, apologize to her for her trash coming over on my property. Because I, I put on Facebook on everything. That's not what I'm here for. I came to you when the store was in about the, the two dollars and lights. Now they're four. And she thought I turned them on and then each shut off at 10:15 or 10:30 when the store was closed. Now, for some dumb reason, they're on until midnight. The neighbors to let them. Me complaining their daughter can't sleep, so they had to buy, put up two windows because the lights were so bright. It's an invasion of my privacy. It's privacy. You know what? That's, that's residential area too. And don't take me wrong, the Dollar General is massive in this community. It really is. And I see, I do. You went and told them to shut them off. They agreed. She's mad now. She's turned them on and now it stays on until midnight. It illuminates everything in that block. Everything.
We'll, uh, see what we can do about that.
Well, if not, it's just gonna come down, you know, I ain't got to manage the Dollar General, but. I gotta do something. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
Well, they, they, they do need to contain their trash and I know you guys have had personality problems with each other. We'll see.
I don't know, Paul died for the trash, but only in my yard. Like hell.
The other day I drove by there and they've got carts and that cardboard looks like it's in those carts. Is it blowing clear out of those carts?
They push them outside with no netting on those carts or just little carts. It's all the boxes.
They're contained in the cart, but.
They're blowing out of that.
It'll blow out of it, yeah.
You know, and that doesn't bother me. What bothered me the most part of it was when she left, there were boxes scattered all over the parking lot. She drives around them. And I'm standing there holding a handful of her, her boxes. And this takes a whole time. So I probably said something, you know, and not only do I have to put up with people being pigs at the Dollar General and not pick up the trash, I play deck gloves and math and all that trash. I didn't play it. Or I just put on Facebook, please people, don't throw your trash down. They wouldn't put trash for us.
Okay.
Now the lights. So she's mad and the, now the lights are staying on until midnight. Come in and when it gets dark, you guys should see what I'm talking about. It's ridiculous.
It was bad enough when there was two.
Now there's four. Only two on each side. So thank you and I appreciate it. If something could be, I would be glad.
Alright, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Clyde, you're next.
I don't have mine.
Cliff, you're next.
I'm hanging out.
Bert, you're next.
Here, I'm a high fire department, sir. With our activities that we're gonna be having during the strawberry festival, we would like to make sure or ask that we can have the portion of the street in front of the firehouse from the north side of Knucklehead to the end of the block.
Both sides?
Well, on our side anyway.
Has there ever been anything there?
It's normally closed. We just wanna make sure that.
Well, you've got to be able to have access to the doors and everything.
Correct. And that's one reason why we're asking.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't know about clear to Knuckleheads, but.
Well, that's just in front of our building, so.
Well, that's pretty much clear to Knuckleheads, in front of your building.
Actually, we own about six foot inside of Knucklehead, but that's a whole other matter.
That's a severe nightmare.
And that happened over a hundred years ago. Way over a hundred years ago, so.
So are you gonna let the strawberry festival committee know that you have all that frontage?
Normally, there's not any there. We just wanna make sure that it's okay for it to be occupied by us.
I'd say it is, yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll let.
Them be aware.
The president know.
Someone else can let the president know.
I'll let her know.
Okay, you should let her know. That'd be great.
We just need to let the people in the apartments know, right?
Yeah, we should let them know. So, um, on the, in conjunction with your activities, I stepped into the insurance office today to just, since MJS/RT Insurance, they employ the town, or they insure the town, they insure the fire department and they insure the festival. I just wanted to make sure that all bases were covered as your activities go into the street. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we already checked.
On our end.
We checked it.
And George did say if you would touch base with him on how you're setting up to serve outside, he would appreciate it.
Service won't actually be outside, but people will be allowed outside.
Okay, okay. Well, he just said, just kinda touched basically on your layout and how you're handling that.
Okay, I see.
So, yeah. So that's the only thing there.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Alright.
Good point. Uh, Tony's next. Kevin? Okay. Well, moving now to old business. Under old business, there any movement on the windows, heard anything?
We have noticed that they're going to start Monday.
Start Monday.
Monday, I know. I don't think Carol and I have been so excited in a long time.
Uh, that's, that's coming Monday, right?
This coming Monday.
Man, you said Monday. I mean, it could be any Monday. Okay, um, have we heard anything more from Joint?
No, we have not. I did receive it, but I said that last month, so.
I know. Has there been anybody volunteer to take the empty seat?
No.
Has there any movement on the ditch on Vine Street? No? Okay. Is there any movement on the pantry drive?
Well, we're on the list, but we're not quite there.
On the list of what?
Of, of, uh, Mr. Wake's list of people to do. I think.
Okay.
Might be another week or so.
Yeah.
Alright. Sounds good. Have we, uh, heard anything about the company that owns the house on Ball Bridge?
I have, uh, Shirley Brown had a phone number for a fella and I've called and left two voice, I've left two messages at some kind of a law firm. I've left two messages for him and he's not called me back at all. I sent a letter to the address on record with the property taxes and I haven't got anything on that either. It hasn't been returned, but I just.
Did you certify it?
No, I didn't certify it. I just sent it. I can send a certified one next if you want me to send that one next.
Next one you can.
Okay, alright. So, but yes, I actually tried to call him again yesterday when I was reviewing everything and they haven't called me back.
It gets their better one certified, don't it?
It gets there the same, but at least you can track it and you'll know when it's signed for.
Yeah, yeah, so. So, yeah, I can send one certified. Um, it has been mowed. I don't know if she's mowed it, but it has been mowed. Or whoever's gone for Shirley.
I think about Brown mowed it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think he's, I don't think that's.
Doing it this year.
That's why she was complaining, because he wouldn't be able to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Natalie's wind gate you still don't have either?
Yeah, that's the phone number that I have. Some guy named Troy Tarvin or something is what Shirley, is what Shirley gave me. Or Suzanne brought it by, so that's the number she had, so. But yes, it's still, it's still titled that Wind Gate Online, so.
In the, uh, minutes, we saw that, uh, we needed some resolution for the, uh, American Rescue Plan. And we have this resolution prepared to cover that. It's a resolution 21 what?
It's gonna be number two.
2102? Establishing the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund. Be resolved by the Town Council of Rosedale Falls. One, the Town Council of Rosedale Park County, Indiana recognizes that a need now exists for the establishment of the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund. Pursuant to Indiana Code 5-11. Number two, the sources of funding for the newly established fund will include monies allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. These monies are, these monies within this fund shall be used for eligible purposes of the ARPA. Number three, funds reseeded into this fund will require an additional appropriation prior to expenditure and all expenditures shall comply with ARPA requirements. The fiscal officer will also maintain detailed accounting records of the fund to provide for future audits of the ARP fund. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion. Approve the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
We'll move to second to approve, uh, Resolution 21, 2021-02. Saying our question? All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Aye? Post, same sign? Motion carried.
Um, on the American Rescue Plan money, so it's, it's supposed to be allocated in two chunks. Half in 21 and half next year. Um, they just opened a portal, a federal, they've got a federal website now and there's a portal in there where you can request your funds. You have to have a plan in place to request your funds. So, a lot of that's gonna be discussed next week in that clerk treasurer school. I'm gonna attend on Tuesday. I'm gonna attend that virtually. And since they're gonna do windows in here Tuesday, I'm probably gonna do that from home. Cause it might be.
Noisy?
Not conducive to a virtual webinar. And this is kind of an important one with that information coming out. Um, none of the other clerks have shared their plans yet. So they'll start sharing those pretty quickly, I would think, and so we can see what other communities are planning to kind of apply for that money for. Some of it's very straightforward. Um, just a lot of it doesn't apply to us, cause we, you know. But there have been shared some, um, some spreadsheets on how you can ask for that money in lieu of lost revenue. So you can take your 2019 revenue and you can spreadsheet compare it to your 2020 and see where you have lost money. Because like we did get less riverboat money and we did get less MVH money. So you can start, that's a really simple way to start, cause that's lost revenue is part of it. So, so I think that's probably where, where I will start. Um, just because it's easy, but we kinda do need to think about plan development. Yeah.
Do you record, like, will you record your webinar so you can reference back to it?
Um, they will. I don't usually record it, but it'll be available to me to reference back to that webinar, yes. They'll actually, he said it'd be available within a couple days. But AIM is releasing, I mean, they're just releasing information as quickly as they get it and they can translate it into stuff we can understand. But all that, I looked on that portal yesterday and it's like, just tons of more federally mandated stuff.
Yeah, they gotta justify their jobs.
They do, and it is, it is very overwhelming. And it's, you know, it's, it's a broad spectrum of things we can use it for, but at the same time, it's narrow. You know, so it's, it's, you can use it for, you know, you can use it for water, wastewater, broadband projects. Or other, you know, things that, but, you know, I don't know. It's just, it's, it's a little overwhelming, so.
Okay. Let's see, where was we? Have any other old business? Take care of? I think I covered everything that was in the minutes.
Yeah, this is the.
Well.
You gonna do that under new?
Yeah.
Okay, who got Shirley Brown? I don't think so.
Alright. Move to new business. Under new business, I got this letter. Uh, it's to the Rosedale Town Council regarding resignation of street department superintendent. Dear Council member, president and members, I've been offered a position with on the spot as a locator. I have carefully considered my options and am willing to let the council make me a counter offer if you so choose. If you choose not to do so, I am offering the following as my resignation. It's with regret that I tender my resignation as street department superintendent for the town of Rosedale. My last day will be May 20th, 2021. After that point, I will use my appropriate allotted time and be compensated accordingly for my vacation and PTO time. It has been my privilege and honor to serve, to have served my hometown for the past six years. I take great pride in my hard work, dependability and dedication to the job and the town. I am thankful to have had the opportunity to work for and help the town, which means so much to me. I wish the town and this council nothing but success in the future as we move forward to new chapters in our lives. Sincerely, Tony Green. Is there any action that the board wants to take on this letter other than accepting it? Okay, reservation accepted. Is there anybody here from the strawberry festival asking to close the street? I don't think anybody came last time they did it.
I mean, do you want me to jump over and stand on that side and ask?
No.
I understand.
You are not the president.
You're correct. I am, I have been informed numerous times that I am not the president. And, um, I was wondering if they would send anyone tonight.
I mean, I know they know when we meet.
I know they do as well.
What would happen if we said you can't do it because nobody showed up?
I know, I.
Somebody would have a heart attack.
I, someone would have a heart attack. Someone's already been having some chest pains and some really severe reactions to a lot of stuff going on, so.
Well.
I think that.
They run it on theirself.
I, I don't disagree with that notion. I think it would be prudent for the town to plan to close the street for them. And as we have always done.
We'll have from the Knucklehead and Bill's.
I, I understand. Are you asking?
Thank you.
Bert, are you asking?
No.
Well, what I'm asking is, one of the meetings that I went to, she mentioned that the folks with the hamster balls were coming back.
Well, I, you know what, Bert? I was just thinking about the exact same thing that you're thinking about. And you're not wrong, so they, somebody should have been here to cover that. I have it here, from my eye.
If they show up and, and come ask him, is, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the chief here, is it okay for us to go ahead and fill out all the hydrant or?
What is it?
Oh, the.
The pool for the hamster balls.
They have these like water, they're called walking on water balls?
Probably forty by twenty, but it's only.
It's a big, yeah.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
But wasn't it located kind of in front of you guys?
Yeah, they really need.
It was, wasn't it, Tony?
It's kinda, that road's kinda snated. They need a flat spot to put it, really.
I don't know where that's, I don't know where there's a flat spot in town, so.
Well, the flattest is the flea market.
That's where it'll.
Well, the tent is going on the flea market. Okay? The tent is going there.
Tent and the stage.
The tent and the stage.
But I, I remember her mentioning that and.
She did, and correct, you're correct.
She's gonna expect us to drag the hose off of hydrant and fill it in order to make sure that was between the chief and everybody that was going.
We'll get guys to help as long as it's. I mean, we can use the tanker and then if we need to, not stir up the water, the power for us to do that.
Go on down there?
Yeah, we'll go down and fill up the tanker.
That would really be best, probably. Okay. Uh, somebody wanna make a. Uh, somebody wanna make a motion to allow the strawberry, the stewards of Rosedale, uh, permission to close Main Street between Middle and Central from noon Friday, June fourth, till six o'clock, June sixth. Got all the coverage, isn't it?
I'll make a motion that we do what John just said.
Oh. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I was gonna say it's John's turn.
So, since I'm brand new to all this, so when, I assume that's an open meeting then? Strawberry Festival, the steward stuff?
The, the committee?
Yeah.
Um, it is, but she doesn't always coast when they're having them, and so, it's kind of a cluster.
It's a
It's a
Kind of a private thing.
It's, it's a bit
They really like you to be a member.
They, they do like you to be a member, they do have a, a club, the stewards, is it one dollar, Birch?
I'm not, it's supposed to be, I'm not even sure they call it the stewards anymore. I don't, I'm not sure the stewards even exist.
That's, I'm not sure the stewards even exist as well.
Okay, Strawberry Committee.
The Strawberry Festival Committee does meet, um, as of right now, there is nothing else scheduled for that committee.
Right.
Because we're kinda getting down to the wire.
Right.
The plan was to meet after the, the Queen's tea, but that's been canceled, so I don't really know what's going on next, so.
And the town has nothing on
I'll watch the page.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a journey every single day.
I'm excited to be on this journey.
And the town's not
Yeah, all we do is close the street.
I know.
Nor is the civic club.
The civic club is not as well, yeah.
They And that's
The Florida Township Civic Club allows them to use the building
Right.
And the lock.
Right.
But the Florida Township Civic Club does not do the Strawberry Festival.
Now, there are some people that belong to the civic club that's on this committee.
Right, right, but the Strawberry Festival Committee is its own thing, yes. Can't wait.
Oh, it'll all work out.
Read out tape yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so we've moved to second to close Main Street from Middle to Central from noon, June fourth to six P M, June sixth. All in favor say aye. Aye. All same sign? Motion carried. There you go, Rhonda, we took care of your business for you.
I'll be sure to let her know.
Well, I can let her know when I talk to her.
You're going to let her know about, yes, you're going to talk to her, thank you for talking to her.
I really am looking forward to that, too. Okay, uh, next thing I have is, we talked last time about going ahead and, and getting an ordinance to do away with the legislative body districts in Rosedale, and we can pass this tonight if everybody's in agreement to do it, or we'll do it next month.
Yeah, cause John wasn't here for discussion, was he?
No.
No.
It's, uh, about doing away with, make everybody at large.
I'm all for it.
Okay, good, good, I mean, I
Yeah, I am.
Is that, yeah.
This is an ordinance, abolishing town legislative body districts. Whereas, Rosedale Town Council members are currently elected or appointed based on districts confined within the boundaries of the town. And whereas, Indiana Code thirty-sixth dash five dash four dash, I'm sorry, thirty-six dash five dash two dash four point one, uh, paragraph H, subparagraph one, provides that the legislative body of a town of less than three thousand five hundred people may adopt an ordinance abolishing town legislative body districts. And whereas, Indiana Code, same as I just said, only the last thing's paragraph two, provides that upon establishment of town legislative body districts, all members of legislative body shall be elected at large. And whereas, the town of Rosedale population of less than three thousand five hundred people, and whereas abolishing legislative districts for members of the town council and converting all town council positions to at-large seats will promote a higher participation, we hope, level in the election and/or appointment of members. Now, therefore, be it ordained as follows. One, legislative districts in the town of Rosedale are hereby abolished. Two, all members of the Rosedale Town Council shall now be elected or appointed as at-large members without regard to where the member resides within the boundaries of the town. And three, this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption. If we wanna do this tonight, there has to be a motion made to suspend the rules to adopt this.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and adopt this new ordinance.
I second it.
I hope they don't have a big stampede.
What does that mean in lay terms?
Each one of us is, you know, it is certain section of town representing it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Will represent whole town now. And they can come from any, any part of the town could be at-large member.
We have five people on our council, and we had one resign in December, and we've advertised for his ward multiple times, and we've had no interest from anyone over there. We've even made some calls, I've made some calls and asked for some people if they'd be interested, and we've just had trouble filling the seat. So this will open up that particular seat and all seats to anyone in towns.
Literal town.
Literal town, yes, not, yeah, not town.
Town boundaries, set town boundaries there.
Yes, yep.
Yes.
Uh, motion is being made, second to suspend the rules for adoption of an ordinance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, what number is this gonna be?
Number one. So going along with that, do you want me to rerun newspaper ads? Do you want me to just keep it on, you want me to just change up my Facebook post?
It just have to be, I don't think we have to put it in the paper.
I mean, I don't think we have to put it in the paper either, I mean, no one called when I had it here for two weeks.
Just, uh, redo the town of Rosedale.
Facebook.
Facebook.
I have a question on that, do you have to, do you have to be a, I guess I call my owner, or does it matter?
All, all that's required is you have to be a resident of the town.
And you probably have to be a registered voter.
That's what I was gonna say.
Well, yeah, that's probably right.
Yeah, you need to be a registered voter in the town of Rosedale and a resident of the town.
There's no requirement for, uh, property ownership. Okay. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance that I read as twenty twenty-one oh-one.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I second it.
We've moved to second to adopt ordinance twenty-one, that, twenty twenty-one dash oh-one, an ordinance abolishing town legislative body districts. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign? Motion carried. Alrighty then. Other new business?
Um
Do anything?
I, I do, I have, yes, I have, and I, I know the answers to this question, but I did, I did say that I would ask. So we are getting a new restaurant in town, I think everybody's aware, um, that Hannah and Chris Comar opening restaurant in our former restaurant space. She contacted me about, um, placing a handicap ramp on the sidewalk going into her door over here.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And she's wanting to know if the town provides the ramp, since it's our sidewalk, or if she provides her own ramp.
Well, that's a good question.
And, um, she also wants to put a couple flower pots out, too. She said she wouldn't be like very obstructive of the sidewalk, that's pretty wide over there, so I didn't see an issue, but the, but the ramp question, I did say it would probably need to meet A D A requirements, I don't really know what those are, thirty-six inches, I assume, I don't know. So I told her she'd have to look that up, but I did say that I would bring up the ramp tonight for her.
She'd have to stop, stop with all that A D A stuff.
Right.
You play with it.
Right.
Yeah, cause she never did do what he was planning on doing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really
He deals with that stuff.
He does deal with that stuff. Um, yeah, he did ask about all that work down there, and then we never, that was never approached, and so I don't know, but she was gonna have Joe put for bill or something, but she just wanted to know if that was something we provided, or if that was something she did.
Is she gonna have to insure that, her business there? I would ask my insurance man what.
I don't know. I don't know, I guess I'm just wondering what the town's role, the town's role in that is.
I don't think, we had a role in that.
I don't think that we have ever had to do that. I mean, I think that's probably the business owner's responsibility.
That's what I thought.
We have, we have a sidewalk there that was put in there a long time before A D A
Right.
Was ever even thought of.
And those sidewalks are in good shape.
So, it'd be something that I believe it'd have to be the property owner.
Great, okay, well, I, I'll just communicate that back to her, so. Okay, something I need, some, something else I have, I guess, I'm gonna consider this new business, um, when they install our windows next week?
Yeah.
I am losing my payment drop. So, we need a different Dropbox. We've needed a different Dropbox, um, I mean, I just, my payment slot is what I should call it, cause it's not a Dropbox, but we definitely need something more secure, um, and I, the only reason I thought about it is cause I actually did get this handy dandy flyer in the mail, so I did do some
It just so happens you did.
It just so happens I got this in the mail. Um, so I don't know what, how the council feels, what you guys, I want something where the bill goes in and it lands in something that locks. We have a lot more traffic in and out of the town hall now than we ever did with the pantry, and we need to be more secure. I, I've looked at these online, and you can get anything from something freestanding outside to something that you put in your wall, that's something that you put through a door. You guys tell me what you want, all I want is something that locks. I'm not sure how I feel about something in the parking lot freestanding for cars hitting it and things like that.
I think freestanding would be an invitation to vandalism.
And perhaps, I don't know about, if you look at some of these online, they have like a slot outside, and then they have, they come in through the wall. I, we're on a block building here, I think the installation is a little bit scary to me. So I need feedback, I need thoughts.
But we need to look at it.
Yeah. Right, so I don't even know how, I don't even know what's possible with this block building.
Port House just installed a freestanding box, but it's not on the road either, it's a box.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're talking, I've seen their box, yeah.
Is there kind that could be attached to the door, like?
Um, there is, there are some of those. Yeah, there are some of those.
That might be logical.
Well, you know, anytime you got anything outside, it's subject to vandalism.
Correct.
So therefore, if you're not gonna be able to go through the wall somehow, or through the door, it's gonna be, have to be outside. Now, you could get a box that could be attached to the outside of the building, and there's ways of attaching it that you'll have to have a backhoe to pull it off of the wall. But, uh, in my opinion, I think that is what you're gonna really have to look at, and of course, they would be locked.
Right, that's why I, I just, I, I mean, you know, the basket Carol installed in there scrape, it does keep them off the floor, but they're still not secure. And I just, I just think that we have to think, I don't know, we just have to think bigger, and we are gonna lose that, and that is, that's vital, but people drop those in there all day long, whether they come in and say hi to me or not, so.
Well, with the COVID, it's been different.
Yes, and these are not cheap. I mean, things like this, these start at twelve hundred to two thousand dollars, and that was just this one company, you know, I found some boxes on Amazon that are a hundred and fifty, I don't know, I mean, I don't really know what I'm looking for.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be able to get something done tonight.
No, I don't think so either, but I guess I need for everybody to start thinking about it.
Right, yep. The bills come in, closer down here yet?
What you got, Jerry?
I, uh, have no desire to talk to Cheryl at First National Bank. I have communicated with them about that property. They're pretty proud of it. Norm Lowry Junior, to me, is not a very good public preparation, public relations type of person, and that's who's in charge of it.
I don't think the payment Dropbox is over there anymore, I think they've removed that from the building. Oh, you're talking about the drawer?
Yeah.
Oh, I think they've taken that off there. Yeah, they had a night deposit box up front.
They did have a night deposit, I don't think, yeah.
No, I think it's gone, they've got it boarded over right there, I think they took that out, yeah. Yeah, oh, no, you're not wrong.
We need something like that, but
Right.
Installation, uh, in our building here, that was put in when the building was built over there, that one was.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, a metal worker that making a slant shoot through the wall.
Yeah.
Now, that's a possibility, too. Alright, any other new business?
I don't think so.
Okay, we'll go to department reports. Under department reports, Water had seventy-four penalties generated.
That's pretty good this last month.
Had two shut offs.
No, two tags.
I mean, I'm sorry, one shut off, and back on, two tags on.
Both unpaid and full as well.
Great. What's up with that?
I don't know, it's kinda weird.
Yeah.
We like it.
What is the standing of the wastewater list station? Tony? They haven't got the other pump fixed yet? Okay. Any other items to report on Water or Sewer?
Leak on the hill is fixed.
What about the parts for the main leak we have? Have they got those?
I have no idea.
Oh, where the old tire was? Everybody talking about? Alright, Street Department report?
We got anything I, I've had a chance to talk to, so I don't have anything for it.
Okay, Park Department? Anything?
No, we're still waiting on tables to be delivered to the park. Well, one table, we're keeping one here. So we can have picnics in here.
Yeah. Okay. Park Department report?
Okay. Under fires, there would be four, one was a structure fire, uh, one is investigation and follow-up, I assume for the structure fire.
Yeah, fire mark, yeah.
Uh, two mutual aids, one structure and one brush. Um, they had four med runs, and they had a possible gas leak run, so they had a total of nine runs.
Okay.
And they are having an activity
Saturday?
Saturday, the, June the fifth. Saturday, the, June the 5th.
Correct. It's going to be a cornhole tournament inside the bay of the firehouse. Along with that, it'll be a beer and wine slushie garden.
And how was your Mother's Day breakfast?
It was, started off very slow and then about 9:45, we got hammered. We went from 180 people to 310 from 9:45 to 10:30.
Wow. Your books might be...
Yeah, I just seen them, he's carried off.
Total was like 3:30.
That's all right.
I think I have more. I don't think they've all made it out.
3:35?
3:30, I think it was.
It was good, the rain slowed me down from getting there. Because I woke up and it just started pouring, I was like, yeah.
It started out very slow, we were off the grid and then at 9:45 it was like...
Yeah, I was, I was there fairly early.
I see you were sitting there.
It was pretty sparse in there at that hour.
No, it turned out well.
Good.
How do they sign up for, how do people sign up for the cornhole tournament?
Registration will be the day of the tournament, starting at noon, uh, noon to 2:00. And then start play at 2:00. Five dollars slushies.
Just win? Uh? What's, what's the prizes on there?
The prize money, so the cornhole tournament, we're going to take all the money, all the buy-in money. And then it will be divided, half will go to the fire department. First place will be 30%, second place is 15%, third place is 5%. Each team will be able to buy in one time after a loss, but not during the championship round. You save elimination until the championship round and that'll be best two out of the...
You're back then?
I'm not very good.
I just made the flyer up. That's Ryan and another guy.
I think it's going to be good.
I've got people asking about it already.
That's a, that's a great draw.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Do you have enough boards? Do you have enough boards?
I think so, right now I've got, we've got access to, let's see, three, four... About seven, seven.
I have two sets at home.
Yeah, we have access to about seven sets right now.
I got access to two sets too, if you want.
I'm not sure how many we're, I mean, we won't know until
There you go.
Until that day.
We, we might eat one set, we might eat eight.
Well, we just live in hospitals, so it's like...
Okay, thank you, Kim. Cemetery report?
Nothing happening there.
No burials, no, no graves sold, no nothing?
No graves sold. You guys still working on some of the headstones?
Except for the graves sold.
Right, right.
All right, police department report?
Uh, five traffic stops, one criminal mischief, one disabled vehicle, one domestic, one information, two juveniles, one unwanted guest, one VIN title check, four warnings.
Oh, we know Gretchen's not here tonight.
Oh, she's not here?
Yeah.
We don't have anything in the paper.
I guess Gretchen's counting on the, the video.
She's going to watch the video and...
I'd like to let the council know that March, I applied for a Park County Community Foundation grant for new body cameras to replace our two that we had that were about five years old. They granted that request, mailed me a check. And I, I ordered the items and it was supposed to be four weeks before I got them. I got them in four days. So actually, we just spoke to them today on the phone and finished out that grant. So I have the equipment, um, getting them set up and learning the software that goes on with those, those services.
Good.
Yeah, Kevin brought that check in to me and it's, that check, it's, it's not really a, it's not considered a grant really particularly for us, it's more of a donation. But I contacted the State Board of Accounts. So if you look at your fund report, you'll find that fund number 217 is the Park County Community Foundation Police Department Body Cam Donation Grant. So I had to create a new fund and, um, so this, this is your fund report for March because I am a month behind. So on your April report, you'll see where the money came in and you'll see where the money goes back out. So it's just, she said that that was the cleanest way to account for it and so that's why there's a new fund on there.
Okay. Uh, what treasures report?
Oh, you know, just kicking it in there. I think with Tony leaving, uh, I've been trying to sort out some things and he's going to show me how the meter reading software works on the Tough Book. And I think, is there a, pretty much a particular route that you drive, Tony? Yeah, he's going to take Cliff on the route. So I will have to read Monday, the 24th after Tony leaves. So Cliff and I have come up with a plan for that.
Okay.
So that's kind of what I've been doing is I've just kind of been planning on little things and making sure that we all know. I'll have to get with Tony about, part of Tony's job is marking utilities when dig tickets come up.
Yep.
And so I'll have to get, because it's been so easy up until now to transfer everything over. So I'll have to get everything coming to the office. I'll have, yeah, I'll have Tony's phone and the notifications do go to his phone. So that was something else I was thinking about. Another thing we're thinking about is mosquito spraying. That's part of Tony's job as well.
Since the town pays for the license, it's also going to do that if you guys are...
So I guess the council can take that under advisement. So, um, because that is another thing that's kind of hard to come by, people that can spray mosquitoes, so.
And the town pays for the license, though. I have to come in once a week and do that.
Well, that would work. Wouldn't have to be every week, though.
And so that's something you guys can talk about as well. Dustin holds that license as well, so there's something else.
Yeah, we can contract it, as far as that goes, too.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Um, so that's what I got going on. I am going to hire deputy clerk. I really need some help, I've been feeling a little stressed out lately. Got a little, got a little, you know, busy in here, so. I got a couple people that have mentioned that they'd be interested, so. If you come in one day and someone new is here, that's what I've done.
Okay.
I saw that this was National Law Enforcement Day, so we'd like to say that we appreciate our law enforcement.
Yes, sir, thanks.
Appreciate what they do to protect us. And I'd like to thank Tony for his service for the town and everything he's done for us and wish him the very best for him and his family, you have to do what's...
Do what you have to do.
Best for your family.
Absolutely.
So we wish you well.
Did you sign this contract?
Yes. I signed those copies. So...
Okay, I'll have him sign another one then.
Yeah, you won't have to make one. Okay.
And cleanup day was a pretty good success, I think. I mean, Becky and Carol and I were up there, um, Tony and Cliff were both up there. I think we got a lot of stuff, we picked up some stuff. That was definitely ice horses in town, of course, you know, there are some tenant... I sent, I sent Clyde to be the lawn mowing police today. How'd you do?
Patton's mowed, Johnson's getting ready to mow and...
Okay. McLean's?
Oh, yeah, I talked to him.
Okay, the Main Street property across the police station needs mowed.
Just had to take care of it.
Okay. Oh, you know what?
Stullers are going to mow it.
Stullers are going to mow it. Andrea's been called today about that one. And she said she thinks that Pam Blue Ball crossed the street mowed the front just to knock it down.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. Andrea called me this afternoon, yeah.
Yeah, she called me today, too.
Yeah, she said she was going to, um, but I think we did get rid of some, I mean, we always get, we never get rid of all of it. We're never that fortunate. We had dumpster space left over. I mean, we weren't near school.
It was good when Felicity went out to pick up litter, she said she didn't find any. I think she was disappointed.
I think she was disappointed as well. Felicity was, you know, she was quite entertaining as always.
It was funny, she said, "I usually can find some by the bar."
She did say that.
Austin Johnson said she's going to take care of all that mess that's around.
Yes, she has a considerable mess, I know. And I was hoping you'd be with me on Saturday.
Take care of that.
Um... Good, good, good. So, yeah, but it was another good cleanup day. Weather was nice, so. Some green chairs landed in the dumpster.
Is that it?
That's it, that's all I got.
Other comments, Ben, again, we'll go back around the room, same direction. Emily, Nikki, Jerry, Clyde, Cliff, Tony, Kevin. All right. You've seen the bills, I need a motion to pay.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills, as presented.
I'll second it.
Then move the second to pay the bills as presented. Anything on their question? All in favor say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who made the motion to adjourn?
I think Carol.
Carol did.
Then move the second to adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, folks.